So tired.
On the way now.
What's the?
No.
No, they didn't.
No.
Okay.
They, they, well, you know, it's pretty serious. We're talking about the ordinance update for the two thousand three. They, um. Accepted, but they didn't, uh. They postponed the second reading.
Okay.
Got to have a, got to go through a second reading.
Okay.
So it's not final, yes.
Gotcha.
Were you at the meeting the other night?
Yes. I stayed quiet and said, but I don't.
Yeah, I wished I had been able to be there in person, it was hard. Camera wasn't working.
Oh, you did the intro on that.
Was there anything glaring that they were concerned about, or?
I wouldn't. The, the biggest question, I think it was about, um. Multi-unit, uh, housing developments going willy-nilly, you know.
The two with the density, I think, the two and a half times density.
Yeah.
You're trying to get it.
Well, unfortunately, we can't control that. And our ordinance said for very multi-unit.
Already, it's kind of like.
Well, it does.
Well, that's, that's the really old version.
That's it, oh, it is.
Yeah. Don, you didn't have to print out any of, uh. Of what, what the current version is.
I didn't, I didn't, I could go do that, but we were just gonna look at it, uh, of the same. Were, were you anticipating Joel putting that up on the projector again?
I'm thinking that, yeah.
Is that, um, but I can go print some as well if you'd like that.
Um.
I would only.
I, I think it's easier to work with.
Okay, let me break it down.
As young kids.
You can go ahead and, um, start the meeting and I will get those out as quickly as I can.
Yeah, I didn't want to.
Good evening, every, oops, good evening, everybody. It's. Jamie, just. What's going on? Hello, hello, hello.
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 Okay, I think it means. Well, that was a good beginning, wasn't it?
Oh, it's also a good start with all this stuff.
I played in Fannin and I've seen several.
That on?
You got an extra pen?
Well, there's gotta be, this one's on, that one's gotta be on.
Chris, you got an extra pen?
Yeah.
Don't know what this does.
And I don't know. What could go?
I figure if anybody had an extra pen, it'd be you.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be the.
Oh, yeah.
You got it?
Let's see if that works.
Something happened just then.
Hello? You got it.
It had to work.
Oh, I'll turn mine off, that's why there was feedback.
Good evening, everybody, this is. I mean, it's like a tape of six. December sixth. We're going to go over some.
He's spending their money on that, I'm not gonna give him.
Information that we have put together or, uh, we, he's put together, so I think that's where we're gonna start. You wanna start?
Yeah, we're getting, yeah, absolutely, I mean, um, I think we got through everything in the ordinance the last time. There, there's two main detections that I want, uh, get you guys into review. First one was. There was, um, a thought about putting in some standards for, um, blasting and how that might affect groundwater and, um, nearby wells. Um, I'll let you know, I'll let you know as soon as I get that, it should be in big red letters. There, I missed, excuse me. Oh, there it goes, turn blue. Um, this is page twenty-two. And. I put together, uh, some suggested language there for groundwater testing as a result of blasting, because I think the idea is that we. Um, blasting specifically, with, there's a question whether it could change the geological, um, structure and affect people's wells within an area, um. Few things I got highlighted here that we need to agree on is the distance, obviously, between, um, wells within somewhere and from my research, it seems like the distance was, four hundred feet was determined based on that formation, I'm not a geologist, so this is under, I have to check. The, the, that, um, geol- geological general formation in the town, which, um, again, we might have to check and see if that, that needs open, uh, producing. Um, or, you know, we could just maybe set an arbitrary, um, distance that might, um, again, is, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not a geologist, I'm not sure how we might consider, uh, do I need to turn my microphone on, I'm sorry. Sorry, that gets through to everyone, um, how, how, what the distance is between, how far we are, we might potentially take, um, these readings based on the geology and, um, we, it's basically just looking at pre and post-testing of, um, water wells within that region to make sure that there's been no changes as a result of blasting, which can, you know, potentially move, change the, um, geo, the, the, the way that water flows in and around the area. Um, so that was something that I believe I was asked to go up with some ideas for, so that's the first thing.
What's the requirement from the state? Is there a requirement from the state?
I actually looked and I don't think the state, I think this is why we looked into it, is because I don't think the state actually has any requirements to look at changes to potential groundwater, um, effects based on blasting, um, they look at groundwater effects based on a bit of a change in else.
Yeah.
But not any potential changes in, um, I, you know, I consulted the, the rules there, whatever, I think it's. I don't know, but man, it's just, I had a two or three dollars, something like that, um. I couldn't say anything specifically about that, otherwise I think we could just reference it, and we have done. So this is just something that I found after a bit of research, seemed reasonable, um. Again, to be considered.
What was the applicant, do you guys remember that? What, what was he gonna do? He was gonna double something. Was he gonna do like a thousand feet? Do you remember?
A thousand feet from.
Blasting within a thousand feet, not four hundred feet.
Well, that's, I mean, it depends what we're talking about, I mean, this, we're, under the subsection of blasting, we've got requirements for, I think, noise and all sorts, and this is specifically for groundwater testing.
Yeah, that's what, he was gonna test all the wells.
Okay.
Within a thousand feet.
Okay, so, yeah.
I feel like it was, right?
Thanks a lot.
And he said he doubled it from some sort of requirement, which makes me think it was five hundred, or yeah, maybe four hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this is saying if you're within four hundred feet in further, or is that saying four hundred feet? The minimum max.
But in four hundred feet of the, the place of the, the, the exact location of the blasting, so, yeah.
You wouldn't touch less than three hundred feet, you wouldn't touch that one.
Within four hundred. Yeah, within, yeah, so that would really be within that, yeah, so you. It says testing for any well within four hundred feet.
Right. That's a max. Would you test that, that would be?
Well, according to that, it wouldn't be required, correct? Well, that's what I mean, I mean, the, the, the difference is to be decided, um, and my understanding with, like I say, the understanding that four hundred feet was someone somewhere, uh, I, I made that decision, I said, based off the, the, the potential quality of the, um, geology, which again, I'm not, is not my forte.
She has another own shame, I prefer.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think the, the concern is that if there's some blasting and it, and it shifts seismically, or, you know, whatever happens, shifts the way that water moves around in the groundwater, it can, it can affect people's wells.
Content.
Either content or reef, um, flow rate, or, you know, refresh rate, um. We just wanna make sure it was, you know, if you've got a, a living nearby, you know, wells imperfectly fired, and then all of a sudden they start blasting, and then all of a sudden you, you've got one gallon per minute, then something happened, right? So that's what we're trying to, I assume what we're trying to provide.
So what is the shift? I think I asked.
Um, again, not my, some kind of, um, geological term for.
My knowledge.
Formation, um. I wish, um, I, I understand, what's the gentleman's name that's always here, is very knowledgeable on Greg? Yeah, Greg, I wish Greg was here, because he told you.
Shift, um, metamorphosis, methylene, methylen.
See, this is, this is what the, the bedrock formations compose primarily of, that is what was recommended for four hundred feet. And I, um, I mean, maybe we could look, I don't know, I'm not quite sure what the majority of, we are, went to, um. Those are metamorphosis, it's gonna be hard doing that.
And do we put that in the definition, both words?
Well, 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 they, uh, the, the, in parentheses is just my description there of why four hundred feet was , um, studied upon, because I looked into that, because, see, given the high trans- transmissivity of these types of, uh, four hundred feet, it shows there's a reasonable distance of seismic influence from the blasting areas. So if, if, um, again, I'm not, whatever the, whatever the geological characteristic could be characterized in for the town, or maybe, maybe there might be even some different. I, I'm not sure, we'd have to check. Four hundred feet might be way under, or, you know, uh, that's something we need to, um, figure out, I guess.
Yeah. I have four hundred feet.
I think. Exactly. It seems that way to me.
Life force plays.
Yeah. Oh, right.
I don't deal with wells specifically, as in drilling them, but I deal with the effects on them. And I know, you know, if one person fills a pool, sometimes somebody a quarter of a mile away runs out of water. So the water communicates a lot further than four hundred feet in certain circumstances. It's not an uncommon circumstance, so I feel like four hundred feet is very. Maybe, maybe not adequate.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to mention in some of the earlier discussions we've had on this, uh, definitely that, uh, four hundred feet, uh, uh, I, I think the folks generally didn't feel that was really protective enough and, um, I think I would be inclined to be looking at something in the order of say eight hundred to a thousand feet, and even, even that being said, I mean, the chance that something could happen beyond that, yeah, certainly could, but, uh, you know, when eight, eight hundred, a thousand feet's gonna be, you know, pretty protective, certainly far more than, than the four hundred feet, so I think I'd, I'd be inclined to suggest. We love that one too, a thousand.
I agree.
I like the hundred.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite aware that if I would beat the same low, I'm just like, say. I was just using that as, that's what I, when I was researching it, that's what, what seems to come up in that, based off geological.
Yeah.
Definition, but that might be much different, I read.
Okay, so, somebody help me with my math here. How many feet is half a mile?
Half mile is, uh, two thousand and six hundred and thirty feet, just something like that.
So if the state domain requires a pre-blast survey, not for water tables, but for it, that's their law, me, um, for any pre-consisting damages to structures and buildings, physical features within a survey radius that could reasonably be affected by blasting, pipes, cables, transmission lines. Oh, wait, assessment of features such as pipes, cables, transmission lines, wells and other water supply systems must be limited to surface condition such as well yield and water quality. So it already says that half a mile, am I reading, I think I'm reading that right?
Where are you reading it from, sorry?
Uh, state of Maine, Maine revised statutes. Performance standards for the quarries.
Specifically for blasting, um?
Yeah.
As for, so you said water, right?
Well, it, yeah, hold on, I just scrolled up to see what it was and then.
Not water quality.
Go back down. It was a ways down, here, blasting, number fourteen.
State man requires a three, half a mile.
Yeah. A pre-blast surveys require for all, do you wanna read it?
What's the, what's the chapter title, you know?
I don't even know.
No, the, you know, okay, the rule.
The DOT or EPA or?
Main, main legislature, dot O N G.
Yeah, some of those with worries. Some that may, D E P, by milk check. Yeah, it's the D E P standard, I mean, but what they, what they then do is then they, um, then the D E P develops a rule, which I think was. Well, if they, if they have a rule, they agree the business, then we're citing, their rule applies, they're like ours anyway, but, uh, um, it's been a while since I've read the, uh, the D E P regs on that as well.
Note half a mile, twenty-six hundred. That, she said a half a mile.
Yeah, it says half a mile.
That's twenty-six hundred feet. Yeah, so chapter two hundred is the D E P rule that deals with field, which is this, you know, um, bell rule, and then, you know, that's what we have to follow, so, um, that's. It's definitely about testing for groundwater, but either, but either way, I mean, I think four hundred feet is, um, is probably well under what we might wanna consider, we've got a thousand feet on the other side, but, um. But again, it'd be nice, if, um, there's someone more knowledgeable than me to know about the geology of, uh, of the town and understand how, how that might affect things, I don't know.
Would we maybe wanna table this part until Greg's back? Are we able to? Or is that something we have to do tonight?
I don't think we have, well, I mean, you know, everything's still up for change until it's not, but, I mean, I, I think we wanna try and get to it. I think we wanna try and get to a point, um, soon where we can, you know, send this out as a.
Well, we have the deadline too.
What's our deadline for? We had another six months, didn't we? Is that what they approved, or was it ninety days? I don't remember.
I don't know, maybe, I don't know.
It stood as offer till back, or turned off the back, or. The council show us to do with it.
After us, yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Don might know that, because we talked about. Well, the deadline is for, um, getting this, um.
Saturday, March six oh nine, I have to make.
We don't know the, the exact day, but it's early March, I think, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I can look.
We don't have to finalize it.
Would we maybe input twenty-six hundred feet for now and then just make a note? To just bring this back to, for when Greg's able to come?
My, my suggestion is if.
I think Joe, you could look it up, right?
If the state, if the state rule covers it, we don't have to.
We don't even have to note it.
We don't even have to note it, because if we say something that, uh, unless we want more stringent than the state.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, if the state thing, twenty-six hundred, and we say a thousand, well, a thousand isn't worth being, because the state rule comes that way, so, um, and so we don't even, you know, if, if we're tied, tied with the state rule on that one, we don't even need to mention it.
What would be the problem with going with the state rule? Would it, is it very much of a difficulty for somebody?
Well, some of the state rules we felt were not as stringent as we like, so.
But this one is.
Well, apparently, if, I, again, it's been quite a while since I've read the state rules on that.
I think we should go with the state rule and put it in.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced that the state rules specifically, I mean, I mean, I've got it here, it's the rule, uh, chapter two hundred or whatever. That talks about standards for all D E P reviews of mining and I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think that in particular, I think this is why we flagged it, I think it was right Greg brought it up, is that I don't think the state rule covers the testing of groundwater related to blasting specifically, it does groundwater regards to, um, kind of all other potential effects, but the blasting, I don't think is.
It doesn't say to test the groundwater, it says to test the yield and the water quality, the well yield and the water quality. Doesn't say anything about testing the groundwater, you're right.
But specific to blasting, because we have other, we have others, this is, we have other sections which we got, testing a groundwater of, uh, just general, if, whatever.
Gotcha.
For the mine in itself, um, because I, I'm, yeah, I mean, I would happily defer to a state rule. Uh, because the state, you have to get perfect in the state, so there's no point duplicating efforts. So, but I believe Greg brought this up because the, specifically the, the blast, the, the concern that blasting might cause a change to the way that people's wells operate, that wasn't covered in the, in the state regs. Which is what this, which, which is what, this is the bit that I put in there specifically to try and address. And again, it might be a question of, um. If, if we're, if we're looking at testing more stringent, uh, criteria than the state, then we could put our own, uh, limits, distance limits in that, um, you know, would be less than a state for the more stringent test. If the state requires certain criteria for a half a mile, but we want something more stringent, we could put that in for a thousand feet or whatever we think is appropriate, if it's for anything more stringent than the state, so, again, without without looking at this state rule in detail, which, again, I haven't done for a year or so, um, you know, I'd, I'd be guess I'd be reluctant to say this is covering everything that the state had, or only covering what the state has.
What do we wanna do?
Well, my question is, um, my question is, oh, Jesus, I'm so loud. I don't need this thing. Um, so if we're gonna test the wells anyway for yield and water quality, why are we testing groundwater? Because if their wells get messed up, it'll be covered underneath of that ashore divon.
Well, if you're, if you're testing a well, you're testing groundwater, that's where the well.
Right.
Gets its water from.
So.
That's how you test it.
Yeah, so.
Groundwater is you test the well.
Okay, so there's no additional.
No.
Ground testing, Greg was talking about, I think I'm just confused on what he was.
Yeah, that was a different application, that wasn't for blasting.
Oh, oh, that Robert, that's. Yeah, okay. Okay.
I think that was the, that was the distinction, is that there was a lot of testing for all the various other activities that might go on. Um, but this, but blasting specifically was the one that we, was concerned that wasn't covered about its magnitude potential effect. But I mean, I suppose, I mean, unless we specify, maybe you know, I mean, because obviously we, we, there's, people's wells are gonna get tested at various times, and maybe that might cover it, um, and you know, if, I mean, I, I don't want it to be duplicative, but I mean, I, I mean, I, I, don't get me wrong, this is my interpretation, I think, what we came, well, away from, from the last meeting, right, was because that's what, that's what my notes represented, that this one would might, we might wanna look at, because it wasn't covered.
What do we wanna do?
So my, my concern is, how do you use, how do we say more than half a mile should happen? Well, I don't have any knowledge of why it should or should not be, so deferring to the state would be, my opinion, for the distance. Unless somebody else has geological knowledge, otherwise.
Don, you, you, what do you think?
I think we need to find out what the state says. Are you talking about not including it in here at all? Just refer to the state, so.
I, here you go, I'm just, no, uh, no, I think that, I think that, I think the problem was, I think, we, it's this, we just didn't think the state did cover this particular aspect, so that, that's why we need to include it. The state's doing it, we don't need to include it.
So we wouldn't even mention it in here? Or would we say that they have to meet the state requirements?
Well, that's a given, we don't have to say that. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, you're gonna have to get state permit with whether, whether the, this ordinance exists or not.
Yeah.
But I think the, my, my understanding is the concern was, and I think Greg's particular concern was, that the state does not necessarily cover groundwater testing specifically for blasting. They, there's, there's lots of groundwater testing for, you know, varied other reasons, but his concern, and Jamie's not here to probably, you know, explain, he probably put this up in five minutes. The, 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 the effect of blasting could have an effect on groundwater that, um, is independent from the effect of the rest of the operation, um. So that's what I, that's what I kinda went away and tried to, to put something together, I mean, I think four hundred feet is, is too small, um. I think we have a thousand feet, some other things, as an absolute minimum, um, again, I would welcome a geological opinion, I'm not quite sure, maybe we can ask the state geological um, department. Um, because it seems to be, I mean, there's, there's obviously, there's, there seems to be specialities out there that understand how blasting affects rock, uh, based on its type, um. More than I do, like I say, the, the bit in parentheses there, it's just to show how, who, what, I can't remember where I got it from, whoever, whoever constructed this had come up with that four hundred feet based on the type of rock that they will, that was predominant in the community. Um. So that's maybe something we have to, uh.
We need to wake up Greg, he's the only, he's the only expert we got on.
Yeah, are we, are we, you know?
Or find it in the state.
Yeah, find someone to answer that question for us, if we even wanna do that, again, this is, I think this is Greg's suggestion, so that's what I've gone and wound down.
He was also very concerned about the shifting.
I suggest that we move on and use ta- table that for tonight, and then Greg will be here and something, and make some research from down.
Okay, yeah, I'd say nothing's set in stone.
He said he might make it, but it might be late.
But, um, uh, hopefully you can look at this independently and maybe give us an opinion in, in the main chat.
All right, what else we got?
I have one, I'm just con- I'm confused, I could just be tired, my kid's been sick for four days, I'm tired, but what is the difference between this and then what's in the state then? I don't understand. Is that what we're saying, is we don't know, and we're gonna work on that?
I'm, I mean, I'm happy to be proved wrong, but I.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just confused, this is something different than we're talking about, and I'm getting something confused.
So my understanding is that the very specif- we're talking about. The effect of blasting specifically on groundwater.
Okay.
And there's lots of talk about testing groundwater under the state regulations. I just didn't know it was specified to the effect that blasting might have.
Okay.
But you're right, maybe if there's gonna be already tested pre and post on groundwater. Um within, you know, whatever whatever area it is. And so, you know, if there's a change, then I guess maybe maybe if it doesn't matter what caused it, there still has to be addressed, but. Mine, that was the, that's what I'm, the concern I think Greg had is that blasting doesn't seem to be particularly specified as a. Something that might cause a change in groundwater, which is maybe where we had the concern, again, I don't wanna speak for him, but it's my memory of the last meeting, so.
Okay.
What was your line?
Oh, I had to one more real quick comment on this this item for future reference.
Yeah.
Um the way it's written, uh. It sounds like, um. This testing would be done at request of the contractor or an abutting landowner. Um I I don't think that we can. Require an abutter to allow us in. To test their well if they don't wanna test.
Yeah, and they wait, and they're as well, I'd say.
Right, uh I think it would be a fun. Request of the abutter that that the well be tested.
Yeah, off permission, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a requirement in here that that we are, we are the. Uh operator has has to go in and test a well if the abutter chooses not to have their well tested. Like most of proven ones will, but.
So just don't let the contractor have that authority, just have the abutting landowner.
Exactly, the abutter only would would uh have to request a permit.
That that one, I I deleted that.
Through the chair, if I may, I just wanna, because I stepped out for a moment, is this the only, because we're moving on from this? This is still hanging out, were there other things before I came back in that didn't get resolved that?
That's the first one we'll talk about, two major things that I.
Okay, thank you.
No, a good point, I mean, I don't think you should, you know, make it that the contractor would have any right to go to people's well unless it was specifically. Um agreed on.
So what Ed just said. What this says to me is the four hundred feet. Is a limit to which someone can request a test. Anywhere from the four hundred to zero can request a test of their well. By the official contract. And all we're doing is setting a limit, how far out that can go, that doesn't mean somebody can't go test their well. But requiring the contractor to go do it, that's what that number is, that's four hundred feet.
The four hundred currently, yes, which we're suggesting would be.
Great logic I thought was, is if you have a blast. And within four hundred feet, you're gonna know there's a change in quantity, content, contamination.
Excuse me, I think this is table, you've gotta move on, we'll be here till tomorrow night.
Two cents, please?
Two.
I have my safe.
Two.
Um. And so. I think that's the intent, is to set a limit on how far out you can require that to be done. And so what does that mean to you, Paul? So at four hundred feet, you're gonna have, I would guess, a change in whatever the makeup of the water is at four hundred feet or less. That's what I'm thinking.
You're on.
Um just the the second one uh was, just to review when I get down to it. Oh, that is. Uh we we decided we want a visual impact slash view shared analysis, so. There you go, I put some um language in there for um. Of that, oh. Which would be on page, um.
I think something, right on?
Says right there. And that's, I know. So this is kind of some standardized language that we've developed. Over several years of working with various developments that have needed to have this, um. And it's not something, and and you know, um it's actually primarily been implemented through solar development and about a couple of applications that. Have met this standard and I thought that it came in quite nicely in terms of what they provided so that they can show. Um what it would look like from where and give some. General idea about the visual impact, um it's fairly simple, it's not, I hope, not too restrictive, any, um. You can, any kind of reasonable um large scale operation could probably put this together, or you know, I had someone to put this together relatively easily.
I like the visual simulations.
Yeah.
I feel like we should just have that on solar too, at that end.
Yeah, I mean, I actually kinda, I I I. A prograted and tweaked this from our solo regulations that we developed in many communities, so.
And is this gonna be like how we ask in solar? Um that we wanna see the entirety of Winterup, not just from certain locations, but also specifically from Mount Pista?
No, you, this is usually like, because there's a fairly, I mean, I've done it myself, there's a fairly simple G I S procedure you can use where you say. You can look at the whole town and you can basically say, where can this be seen from, and it will literally highlight those areas, because it, because you have an elevation model. And says. Uh I mean, and and what, and you can literally say, okay, so what if my average tree height is fifteen feet? And then it will say elevation plus fifteen feet, and it'll figure out literally where the visual points that this can be seen from. If your head is sticking above the trees. And it will just highlight them on a map and, you know.
Okay. Should we put a caveat in there that if it's too big and ugly, we can say no?
Well, I think that, well, I think the point is, if if if, you know, if they're honest with their appraisal and that's, that's what it's look like, then. Having this in here says, well, you could say, well, that's too big and ugly, but then we don't like it, you need to do something about that.
Wide.
Yeah, the whole point is that if you can say, well, this might be too big and ugly, but now they've given you, you say, well, it is too big and ugly, so you have to do something about it, yeah.
Survey doesn't say that.
No, I don't think it would be, that's fine.
I thought that was pretty.
Sorry?
Thorough coverage on that one, actually.
Yeah.
This is Jim King. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? He's raising his hand and follows us. She, he should be able to talk. Jim.
Yeah, okay. The audio quality is better than it had been in the past, but it's still not what I would call um really good. Anyway, I would just like to um. Say that. Um. I I think that we're really, what we're really concerned about here are, in what we. Call in economics, external externalities, meaning. It's a cost there born by a party other than the producer. And um. You know, an example is if an activity pauses uh uh. Roadways to deteriorate the uh faster than uh normal, the then. The public bears the cost of building a new roadway, well. The same kind of a cost can be borne by private parties. And what we're really talking about here is trying to keep those costs down. Or eliminated. And um. The other thing, I, you know, right along with that is, you know, I, we have a a pretty strong environmental concern here. With blasting. And we could just as easily have an ordinance that has no blasting allowed. And that might sound extreme, but you know. Um. In agriculture, years ago, we thought we couldn't get along without D D T. And you know, it appears that we're getting along just fine without it. That's just one small example. And um or we could allow blasting at a certain minimal um. Value, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how to measure. Um a a particular um detonation strength, but um. We just, what we're really trying to do is keep the effect of the blasting. From spreading beyond the property line. Because no property owner has the right to damage. Um nearby properties. So. I don't know why we couldn't just say no blasting, there's plenty of other ways to get rocks out of the ground. It might cost more that in the long run. Society is the party who pays, so that's that's my input. And um I'm going to push for it.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll say you'll probably be, I mean, you'll probably be hard pressed to outright prohibit an activity like that, um. You'd probably get fairly, you might get some significant legal challenges from wanting to do that. You can regulate it, just to quite a severe extent, but I don't know if you can outright prohibit a a use that's not. You know, not um. Allowed at a larger level than a than, you know, municipal regulation, so. There's something to be said for making sure that. It abides by whatever standard the town would like to say, but outright for whatever prohibition might be a tough ask. Legally, I mean, I like to say, but I'm not a liar, but I can just be my initial thoughts on that idea. You can make it difficult, you can make it very much restricted, um but outright prohibition might be a. Tough one.
Can I ask a question real quick? Did we already go over hours of operations? Is that when I missed the meeting?
I think we did, yeah, I think I I actually think after this, if everyone's. Okay with the visual thing, I think that we've got through everything at the last meeting, so we're a point now, um. You know, on to the next thing.
Uh yeah, I had a comment on the hours of operation, uh you could back up one page. And. Maybe a quick day, I guess, you know. Page twenty three of mine.
Yeah, you too.
Um. Yeah, commercial and rural, that that really doesn't. Buy to anything here?
It's true, yeah, yeah, because we we already restricted it to.
It's all restricted to to rural anyway, so that 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 line could be struck completely.
You're right, there it was, but.
So commercial and rural's coming up.
Yeah.
So if everyone's, you know, if there's any particular issue or comment on um that visual impacts um. Language, then we have. I mean, you know, if if we're providing, we don't have any major concerns or changes which we may do to that other section. We have a, we have a. A finished initial draft, we'll we'll put it that way.
Can I comment on hours of operation just real quick? How come we're letting them crush and process until six P M?
Put it down an hour, but.
I know, I just feel like somebody lives nearby and they're having dinner, long day at work, I wouldn't wanna listen to that.
Well, then that's supposed to be able to hear it. The whole idea is that, yeah, that we have noise standards, whereas if you can hear something above. Um whatever decibel level it would be at the property line or even after just the property line, so.
How are you gonna crush rock with that?
I mean, yeah, I mean, if they, if if there's noise in the property line and then they 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 shouldn't be able to do it, you know. That we have all, the all noise standards should prevent there being a dele- deleterious noise at the property line. And hopefully, you know, folks have a little setback on the property line, but still.
If it creates too much noise properly, then I can't do it.
Yeah, noise noise restricts it and then hours of operation. Just restricted in general, you know.
Is there really ways that a place that crushes rock could block noise past the property line? I mean, on like, not some ridiculous, you know, twenty thousand acres.
Well, I think that, I think the point is that you've got enough space to be able to do this, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
If you can't do it.
Hmm.
Space to, um, I mean, I think, I mean, like you say, we talked about, you know, we can, I I think we can make it. Have to meet performance standards, so certain places it might not be feasible to be able to do that, because if they can't. They can't meet the noise standards at the property lines in the location that they're posing, then. They won't even deny the um. Or if they go into operation and they are under, they, there's noise at the property line, then the then that can shut them down or.
Did you move the mineral extraction fees?
The very last page?
Yes.
Um that was something I felt we, um, I don't know. Yeah, well, I think, I think the, my understanding, Dawn, is that this might be the purview of the council to just. To be set in fees as opposed to it being in the ordinance here.
Did I make, is that a change I made?
No, it was, it's still on there on the end, and I think we talked about, I mean, I'm literally wrong there, um.
Thinking, you know.
May not be part of this ordinance located here, because the fee structure might be completely separate, um.
Because they changed, so.
Yeah, and and actually, that's why they shouldn't really be, actually, you're right, it shouldn't be in the ordinance, because they should be up here changed without the audience. Or- ordinance being changed, so that's a whole different process.
So there are two things, there are two things, I went and updated technical references that we had talked about.
Oh, thank you.
Um but there were two things that are outstanding that I was still looking at, and one was the fee schedule.
Okay.
So I printed, we don't have a formal fee schedule approved by the town council, but the enforcement officer did have a list of. Fees that you know pertinent to his department, so I brought this and then hopefully at the end of this discussion, we could discuss how we might wanna move that forward and. Getting a fee schedule adopted by the council and then establishing what those fees might be pertaining to this ordinance, so that's. Open ended, and then the other piece that I wasn't able to resolve yet was. The references regarding traffic in the design of the access drive and the road. Um we have. The subdivision ordinance which has some design in it, and that also refers out to the road and street construction ordinance, which has design elements in it, so. I'm still trying to go through and make sure that we combine those in the correct way, so that's something that's going real jolly, but I'm working on it.
And are we, is this like a use that can easily just get plugged into the land use, um. Land use table in terms of like zone and allowance, well, I think we agree, you know, verbal, that's gonna be it.
Yeah, we we don't have cycle plan regulations, is that what you're referencing, I'm not sure.
No, like in the land, in the land, in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Um you know, like uses, you know, mineral, and then they have a table and say, well, which zones is it gonna be allowed in and who has to review it? You literally probably just have to put another line in that saying mineral extraction operations.
Yeah.
Not allowed, not allowed, not allowed, and then I think.
It is in there now and it's.
And isn't that, okay, so as long as those match up, and then there's, there was just a few other, there was some other pages here that. Is kind of administrative stuff, or did we have to check those out? Um administrate stuff which might already be.
Some of that you just add meetings and then, yeah.
So I just, um, yeah, stuff like, you know,. So I just, um, yeah, stuff like, you know, how to amend an ordinance. That might not necessarily need to be in this ordinance, it might be situated elsewhere, I just wanted to check that.
Yeah.
Yeah, check other regulations, see if this is already been detailed. Oh, that was, yeah, that's um. Chair, if you don't mind, yeah, they're just, the appeals and variances, just to make sure that that is in line with how. Other such appeals and variances are handled, so there's not discrepancy there.
I don't think there's anyone who has any purview of an ordinance outside the zoning ordinance, but I hear what you're saying.
Because I was not sure about that, because I'm used to um hills barred only being able to grant variances. Again, whatever, whatever fits the rest of the way the town does things.
Yes, I have no answer to that question. So you're saying we should, we should take the fee schedule off here?
Yes, and I'll leave it on, I mean, left it on there in terms of now, in terms of far. Reference and reminder, but it will, we won't have a fee schedule in this ordinance, just good luck.
So we gotta work on that concurrently, we'll be left with no need to let. There's a lot of concurrent things happening, aren't there? I, can I ask a question? I have a question. Okay, um, so. This is something I've asked before and I haven't gotten the answer. Are there any active gravel pits in Winter, other than the one that's on Turkey Lane? Do we know that answer? I'm not aware of any, but I I also don't know for certain where that line is. Is it at the state? Do they have to have permitting at the state? I guess it's a little unclear to me. What that is. What it's calling out and just that. Okay, because that's my only question is, because if we're doing, this applies to existing operations, and if they are not compliant with everything we put in here. They're closed down. But what if they are not on twenty thousand acres of land? And somebody can hear them crushing rock or moving rock?
You're talking about a gravel pit versus um.
Right.
But this is, right?
Yeah, so, well, this is gravel in for you, is it not?
Mineral extraction and mineral extraction.
Yeah, so that's why I'm just asking about like. Nobody can hear it if you're not, if you're not, if you're not on the property, you're not supposed to hear it, so I just want to make sure that there's not some sort of. Pre-existing gravel pit that we would potentially completely close down. I don't know, but I don't think there's anything that's huge. But that's a thought to put in, like. Just gonna change the law and destroy somebody's gravel pit, that could be accurate, that's why I might want to look into that.
The ordinance doesn't say if if you're off the property, you can't hear it. The ordinance gives a decibel level for off the property. You probably. And oftentimes may hear it, but it's it's at a decibel level that is considered. You know, an appropriate level for, you know, uh. Uh, normal, uh, normal use. Doesn't say you can't hear it.
Okay.
Now, I and and I could qualify that, wearing hearing aids, if I take those out, there's a lot of things I can't hear. That you can, so. I'm I'm sure you could hear a rock pressure going on somewhere in your neighborhood, but it. You know, at what decibel level is it, and is it at a level that's considered intrusive and and inappropriate?
That's what I was trying to clarify, because I wasn't here for that part, and that's what I was like, wait a second, I'm not understanding, but that makes better sense. Okay.
We have decibel level limits, but if nothing says you can't hear it.
Okay. I don't know, I have notes to myself going back, as at one point you mentioned about existing. Um, mineral extraction operations, if there are any existing. We're gonna require them to send an application, but I don't know, a note to myself is regarding, do we have, is there a noticing requirement for that? So noticing existing operations, but I'm not quite sure how we bear it out. Except they have a state permit or so, that is a question I have myself. Because the Turkey Lane one has a state permit that just needed to be transferred to the new owner. But I'm just curious if there's anybody else that has a state permit for one, that it's a gravel pit. Not trying to license over functioning currently.
I think they would have come forward by.
Maybe.
Well, I mean, the state will provide a list.
Because I think it would be important, maybe.
Yeah.
Very interesting. The business that they have of their days.
Alyssa?
Yeah, that's all I have.
I'd like to go back to the dust and air pollution.
Page please.
Nineteen H.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
As I. One of the big concerns of this thing is the fugitive dust. And the two point five micron in the blast. As I look through this thing. It talks about, pretty generally. Dust has got to be kept to a minimum by the use of modern equipment and methods of operation designed to avoid excessive dust. Then it goes on. Talks about minimum state requirements. And the equipment must have a current M D E P air emissions license. Talks about dust generated by activities. Uh, must be controlled by sweeping paving, best management practices. All all of this is pretty subjective. Generally, in my opinion.
Well, these, these are referencing the D E P. Laws that they would have to abide by to get their D E P permit. So, you know, we talked about before about the um blasting and and reference to the D E P, this is one of those instances where. Instead of detailing it all ourselves in the ordinance about what does it mean, this is basically referencing the statutes that. They have.
Does the D E P get specific?
Yeah, there's, there's a whole, yeah, I mean, there's a whole rule, um, chap, I mean, like, yeah, we have a whole rule from the D E P that they have to meet to get their D E P permit. Which goes into the detail.
What is that?
It's uh, chapter, I'll say what, I'll write it right here. It is the. Amendment of environment protection, chapter two hundred metallic, uh, or mineral exploration, defense explosion and mining. Um. That that lists, it's, it's uh. Ninety-eight pages of regulations, um, that mean they have to, that that goes with the specifics of what they have to do to meet that.
The contractor. Would have to, they 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 do more than just setting up a bunch of sprays, they they've got to.
Yeah, they've, they've got a D E P permit, they've got to, they've got to meet the D E P standard, which are detailed in these rule chapters.
Some of the research I did, uh, there are companies that designed them, according to them. You have to go in and look at the application. And design the nozzles and all for that application.
I mean, we're gonna strike a balance here between what the D E P are presumably going to enforce themselves and what we are expecting. Mark or wherever the code enforcement officer might be to be able. Um, minimize their workload with them having to have special, specialized, or to, I mean, and and we have a, we have, we have a um. A clause in there saying we have to get third parties to be able to determine this stuff, they have to be paid for. And such, but, you know, again, the, just the administrative burden on the town.
Well, I guess what I was getting at, how do we know? Does D E P require testing?
The D E P would would require, I mean, can't speak to them exactly, but if they get a D E P permit, then we have to assume that they satisfy the D E P. Requirements and I don't know, again, I don't know how often the D E P show up to um check that these are still being abided by, and maybe that's something that Mark does. If he gets a complaint or if he's, you know, happens to be out there and something goes on, then he liaises with the D E P, um.
I understand that, with the visible stuff, with this two point five micron below. Can't see it. We don't have anything in here about testing. I keep hearing, oh, there's no, there's no instruments for testing.
Of course there are instruments for testing.
Of course there is. Well, that was one comment I made. Uh, go online and look for our instruments of test, but we don't have anything in here. I don't know, maybe the D E P does. I'm familiar with that.
And for these terms, so.
The one point on the. Dust creation and you talk about visible dust versus the, the uh. The invisible two point five micron and so forth, um. There, the processes don't. Don't generate one or the other, they basically generate dust, visible and and sub-micro particle size.
No, I understand.
Together and. Uh, you know, you're right, you're not gonna see the small one, but but they're generated in the same same process and. If you are controlling the dust. And to the point where it's not visible, well, you control the bulk of the, of the sub-micro particles as well.
How do we know for that?
Because they're, they're together, you know.
I understand that. How do you, how do you prove that this stuff is getting on?
How do you prove, well?
You test and see if there's any uh two point five or above, right?
Okay, and and what, I guess what would you propose to be done uh on that, because. You know, implementing dust control and and, you know, visible dust control and. You know, monitoring that, what, what, I guess what would you propose in an operation that.
I would propose some kind of testing to see if this stuff is getting on.
Uh, how how would you propose doing it? Daily, uh?
No.
Weekly, well, I I guess.
I would initially do it for each operation.
One time?
I'd do it before they start and then.
Well, if you do it before, I mean, there's no dust. The dust is created during the operation.
I understand, but how do we know there isn't any ambient?
Are we gonna test it?
If they're not doing it, then they're not creating any dust.
Well, then you wouldn't know if there was any there to start.
No, you. If you're, the operation creates the dust.
And you're saying there's nothing else in Windsor that could create two point five below?
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, I never said that. Oh, no, we, everything we do.
You'd want to know before.
The, that is monitored and and the state has, uh, they've got about eight or so. Stations around the state that are monitoring that regularly, uh, the closest one happens to be in Augusta. Uh, I looked at the results, uh, testing results on on that and the results are, uh. Have, uh, the seven, eight stations range from uh two to four. Uh. Uh, microgram per cubic meter. Uh, which is the standard they test by, uh, the range is two to four, I think the uh. The Augusta station was reporting somewhere on the order of two point eight or three, something like that. So yes, it's there. It's so.
It's every, it's everywhere that. So if you were test, testing after they started their operation. Any increase would be due to the operation. Because there's already some there.
Yeah, so yeah, there's there's some there.
So if you you measured, uh, once they started operation for their various. Operations, uh, it was pretty much the same as the state's measure, you could assume you're not getting any fugitive dust. Okay, below two point five, that's what I'm getting at. I I think what, I mean, unfortunately, otherwise, what have, what what the situation is, is if there, if it's in a butter or. Maybe not even in a butter, someone has a particular issue and says, we, we have. A reason to suspect there's an air quality problem, then once you have a complaint, then that's usually what triggers. Some kind of um action, whether it be through the D E P or through the town, to be able. Investigate that as opposed to, I mean, I don't, maybe the D E P, I don't know if the D E P requires routine testing, but usually it's if there's a. Active complaint, then you can go out and and you've got something to, something referenced. As, for example, in this ordinance or otherwise, or on the D E P permit, to say that it can, it it shouldn't be doing this. And then if they found a violation, then they go, but it's usually, unless the D E P are gonna do, and and again, I don't know. If they do regular testing for these kind of things, but otherwise, if it's activated by a complaint, then that's when you get someone going out. Yeah, it'll activated by um specific complaint. I don't know about D E P doing regular testing, I doubt it, maybe they, maybe they do. You know, they have to renew these licenses every so often. Um. Can't, can't speak to that.
Well, D E P operates the stations that are currently, like I say, a half dozen or seven, eight, whatever. Stations around the state, various locations.
Um, I mean, the the thing is, is.
I know they do field testing.
Someone, someone can say, well, there's the terrible air quality as a result of this thing happening down the road. You can't do anything unless you've got something in ordinance or otherwise to to, you know, give the code enforcement office some authority to. Deal with it, so this is what hopefully this would do.
In the case of these fine dust particles. I I don't think anybody's gonna complain about them. Till twenty years from now, when somebody gets arrested.
That's a good point, I don't know, yeah.
That, that's my point. Why don't we measure it now, so we know? Chances are, there isn't gonna be, I agree with that.
I, yeah, I don't know, I mean.
I can guarantee it.
I don't know, yeah.
I don't know anybody else who can.
No, the resources to do regular testing, I mean. I, I.
Just my two cents.
No, I, I understand.
It's a big concern with our neighbors.
It might be, it might be affected by people, they might not even know it.
I haven't seen anything here yet, but alleviate those fears. The only way I know of is to test. I'm talking about continuously.
Do you know the cost of testing?
No.
Well, I'm thinking.
Come on, that's a dumb question. Asking me what it's gonna cost, I don't know. Ask, ask, ask people if you could, what it's gonna cost them if they.
Well, you read the article, I thought it might, they might say.
It's a good general question, obviously, I expect you to know, but.
No, that's a good question, I have no idea.
I mean, if we, if, you know, maybe.
D D P's aren't doing it, so I'm guessing.
I mean, I'm not sure if they are, I don't, I mean, you know, that that resources.
It can be too awfully expensive, but they would.
It is. I think the problem is cost, doesn't it, and to think that if it's. These other places, are they constantly doing, owning machines, do this, you know? I don't, I don't think they do, and I think that's part of the problem, is what we don't want. Is unfortunately what everyone has, and that's that that nobody tests it on a regular basis, because. The ability to test it properly is not available to the small. quarry, I mean, I say quarry was huge. I think you then have a company large enough to probably own this half a million dollar piece of. Equipment, but I don't think that you're gonna find this cheap piece of equipment to test this, honestly, that's.
I, I have no idea.
Did you read what I sent out? Those aren't very expensive. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if they work or not.
Well, that was.
But they're, they're pretty inexpensive. I I think it sounded, it sounded like they were something that. You stick out there. Made for uh. An individual for carrying, and then I hope the test is done. Of the sample taken, but I don't. The, I'm pretty sure. That the. D E P requirement for. Regulating the visible dust. Uh. Was implemented. To control all of the dust, since the fines are generated in the same process that the visible dust is. If you control the visible dust, you control the fines as well. And I think that, that probably. The reason that they're using the visible dust as the criteria for general day-to-day operation is. general day-to-day operation is if you eliminate the visible dust, you eliminate the fines along with the larger particles as well.
Well, one of the vendors that are reading the supplies, the nozzles and system, uh, disagrees with that. If you don't have the right particle size in your water, the fine stuff will get away. It'll take the course of.
Or very good chance the equipment manufacturers that, uh, are utilizing these spray are aware of that and one would hope that they, uh, are doing better than just throwing gatton hoes on there, but I, I guess I don't know that for sure either.
It'd be interesting to see what they would supply and how they would prove its, their performance.
Does anybody know what other quarries around here do? Audience.
I doubt it.
Visible dust control.
Yeah. You asking us?
Huh?
Are you asking the audience?
Oh, yeah, you can answer if you have one.
Again, these rock crushers are equipped with watering nozzles of varying sizes. And depending what type of rock, I'm sorry, depending what type of rock is my own? Depending what type of rock is being crushed dictates what type of nozzle they're going to use, how much water they're going to put.
That makes sense.
Which brings up a problem with water contamination of water containment, uh, if you've been a large operation. Uh, St. Lawrence Brothers down in Savannah has got a pretty sizable operation. Right off the turnpike and again, I, I, they're running at least two crushers and maybe more at this point. Uh, last year, we take, take that back, twenty twenty-two. And again, uh, there was a lot of water that was being used. Now, again, they don't have an ordinance, they don't have the toll factors like we have here, uh, in, in our, in our town ordinance. Uh, but again, it's and it's right to some point, once you minimize the big stuff, the small stuff stays down as well. But the problem is, is minimizing that big stuff. You need the correct nozzle and the E P regulations are very clear. Somebody's got to eyeball make sure that the dust is twenty percent or less. It's not a very scientific way of measuring.
I know.
And, and the Oregon D E P on their website has plans to make these roof mounted two P M two point five monitoring stations. They started a hundred bucks on Amazon for the personal ones, one fifty for the home ones, and I mean, I don't know what the commercial ones are.
Do you think they're worth it? I mean, I think something like that works.
Well, they're selling enough of them.
That isn't a big order, so, I mean, it could be the, the thing.
According to the scientists that, that work with us, the evolution specialists. It's, well, it's better than nothing, right? It misses some of it, but it picks up a lot of it.
Okay.
And, and again, I, I've got to rely on the guy who's been published in fifty-two peer-reviewed magazines, uh, to give us some, some correct information there.
No, thank you.
That, that's the one I think I would look at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak on this. I've been biting my tongue here for a while.
Thank you. Have we tuned this up enough?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah. Sounds like there are monitoring devices.
What?
And why wouldn't we require?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
If you're going to require testing, then it would be, in order to be valid, there has to be a third party.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where I think the expense. And it has to be calibrated and that the machines, like, you know, if I do a test for the state, I have to show proof of calibration of my equipment. I have to do that on a, on a schedule required by the state. I have to be able to produce that and I have to do it as a third party. I can't test my own equipment. So it'd be the same thing if I was sending you ordinance. You couldn't, if you required the contractor or the pit inquiry operator to tech, to provide their own testing results, it wouldn't really hold up, I don't think.
I don't think.
So is there, there is third-party companies that do this in Maine?
I don't.
Did what, do quality testing?
That could do this type of air quality testing?
I'm not sure. There must be, there'll be, there'll be engineered companies that can do it.
Yeah.
I just said if we're going to require it, it would have to be required. And if we were going to require it and then accept the results, we have to do third-party result.
Yeah, I agree.
So the Amazon ones will apply.
Well, it's just like when you get tested, like if you work in a hospital or you do X-rays, you have to wear your little badge that records your radiation and then they test it, like.
A third party would test.
Exactly.
You can have somebody.
And the key question.
The person that owns the X-ray machines.
Does the town want to go above and beyond what the D E P is doing to give them an emissions license? That's, that's, I mean, that's the third hurdle, is that, is that something the town wants to do?
So my thought would be, would we maybe want to, somebody could contact one of these test companies that does the testing to find out, like, would it cost a million dollars a year? Or is it relatively reasonable thing to ask somebody to do? Like, what if it's only five hundred dollars to get it tested and have the monitor there? Or two thousand dollars? I don't feel like that's unreasonable and I would, I would agree with that, to ask them for third-party testing, if it was in a reasonable area.
If we were to require testing, sort of the criteria we set up?
I have no idea.
That was my thought, too.
Again, we'd have to, like, really research a little bit more into that.
What, what, yeah, what limits would you have and again, if you do baseline testing and you find, all right, we got three micrograms per cubic meter today, start up operation and now all of a sudden we're seeing five or six, okay, there's a hundred percent increase. What's the criteria? Is that a?
Is there one that's already for the state when they're doing their testing? Like, is there concern? There's got to be a level where they say, okay, you're in the red, you're in the orange.
The current, current E P A level on that is twelve micrograms per, uh, cubic meter.
Before it becomes detrimental to the effort.
Right, yeah, right. Uh, and with discussion of possibly reducing that to um, nine or ten or something like that, but nonetheless, uh, that's, uh.
And that's in the city, right? That's like in the.
No, no, that's, that's in, in, in the United States of America.
Okay.
Not the city. Now, uh, a good, a good point on this, uh, in micro particles. Uh, these are generated with basically everything we do and they're, they're throughout the atmosphere and I'm not saying they're, they're higher in Maine than anywhere else or lower in Maine than anywhere else, but they generated the forest fires out west in Canada were contributing. Driving to and from work is contributing. Putting, starting a wood fire is contributing big time. Uh, pretty much everything we do, the chemicals that go in the air contribute, so, um, you know, this, this isn't the only source of those and, uh, they're out there and, and where I think we're relatively fortunate in Maine that we've got, uh, levels that are substantially below the, uh, uh, control limit, but I may not control, but the, uh, sort of considered acceptable limits at this point, so.
Be nice to keep it that way, but that's a good point, though. What if there is a forest fire off and the particles are higher in general areas and then they come and test it and then it's like, they shut them down?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And, and what if you drive down your, your road in the summertime and, uh, pretty much everything we do is generating this.
I'm hoping there'd be some kind of baseline average as opposed to an individual.
Right.
So my, my point, my point there is if we're going to require testing, we're, we've got to set up a criteria on, all right, what's an action limit? How, how is the test going to be conducted? At what point? How frequently, uh, and, and then what's the action level and?
God, it is kind of like a little mini D E P.
No.
It's a whole section.
That's, that's my point right there.
No, you're right, to responsibly do it.
If we go with our plan and we tell them, um, we tell them, okay, you have to do this testing. It's going to cost you whatever. And they have to pay for it according to our plan. They have to pay for it. I think you're going to run into, you're going to see a few people called lawyers because that's really setting somebody up money-wise, I think. It's like saying, okay, we'll do this and look how much this is going to cost. I, I just see it as, as a putting it on the job in law because there's no actual answer to it. I, I, I don't believe there's an answer. Nobody seems to find one. They look and it's here and it's there and it's on, it's off, and yes, it can and no, it can't. This is not a huge, a real big quarry. So what happens, I think it's out west, they have the big, big quarries where I'm raised in the southern southwest, um. How do we, how do we? We have to be fair to everybody and we have to do what's best for the community. And this makes it, this type of thing makes it very hard to sit in the middle and make that decision. You may not even like yourself, whichever one you make, but you've got to make one, a decision that makes it fair to all those groups of people. I think it really takes some thought and some. That's all I have. Is that enough? I think I will take, um, okay, we've got a few extra minutes and I know you people have been sitting here.
I just want to make a quick comment about dust. Much of the.
Who are you?
Much of the.
Yeah.
Oh, Steve Robbins. I'm sorry.
Okay.
My, my bedrock is soluble, it's dissolved all the time. Last thing that will dissolve is the quartz, which is essentially silica, which is why we, we, uh, put it all over our roads in, in winter time. Because that's the granular composite material there is, is sand, which is potentially silica quartz. So sand beaches are, are white because it's all silica. So what we do is we put it on the sand, on the road every time it snows. We grind it all up in the springtime. When you're driving down the road, probably the most airborne silica that you're going to see is the dust that's created when there are people out there, they're sweeping it, they're blowing it.
I believe you.
Their machine is going around town and sweeping it up, but that is the silica that's ground up into very, very fine particles. So they're probably the worst, the worst scenario of silica or the worst threat is putting on the roads.
Like the baby powder thing, right?
Excuse me?
Like the baby powder thing?
Yeah, sort of, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Go ahead, go.
So, hill through C, uh, so again, to Rex's point, uh, there is a lot of silica in the air. I don't know why we would want to add to that. Uh, the testing itself, again, is being done in other states. Uh, I go back to the rooftop mounted P M two point five and they have plans online to build your role. So it can't be that, that critical. I, I would not want to be testing twenty-four seven. When, when the crushers are not working, there's no sense in testing it. Some of this equipment would record, uh, the readings. You would have to talk to an air pollution or, or an air specialist to, to further educate us in, in what those allowable limits are, but they're out there. I'm sure the paper industry tests air quality coming out of those stacks or, you know, all the time. Uh, so, so it's, you know, I've got a lot of comments, but I think what I'm going to reserve my time for the next time that you've got a public comment section. I wasn't, you know, I don't think we were prepared to publicly comment tonight.
It's just a few people, so like.
Yeah.
It was only a figure.
First of all, I really appreciate that.
I didn't want you to buy something too.
I had invited my time back there. Uh, the, the four hundred feet, uh, the original, uh, application from that, there we go engineering. We had agreed to go up to four thousand feet. And Steve, Steve's well and my well were just outside of that requirement. So they identified themselves that they needed to, in order to assure the public, and it was probably the challenge when it was just, I'm not asking for four thousand feet, but I think twenty-six hundred feet or twenty-two hundred feet, whatever that number is. I think it's a reasonable number. The reduction of particle, big particle value, uh, cutting that in half has proven to really reduce damages to foundations, wells and, and infrastructure. Oregon, Nevada, and Nevada is a big, is a big quarry state. The, the Nevada got the even lower numbers, but that didn't prove that, that didn't prove good for the, for the operators. They had a lot of failed blasts. So they went back up to point five P P V, uh, versus the one point two five that the state allows. That's the, that's the, the velocity of the particles as they travel and cause damage. Those, those standards were set by the Bureau of Mines in nineteen, the nineteen sixties. And at that time, the Bureau of Mine assumed that ninety-five percent was a good number of no, no, caused no damage, but they were willing to accept five percent damaged structures. That's, that's a high number for, for these areas, so I'll have more in the next meeting, but thank, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Well, we're all going to know far more than we ever wanted to know.
Well, we're all going to be down there.
That was a joke.
Just one little thing for you about the, uh, the silica that's happening.
Thank you, Gil. I love your reading material.
And it's a medical paper, so.
Oh, good. I like that even better one. Okay, I guess, all right, I think this, are we done?
Well, I mean, aside from figuring out what the next steps are in terms of if we have a finalized, finalized draft and then what the process is then to go to, and a formal public comment as opposed to.
Yeah, I would suggest that we take formal public comment soon because we have that short window.
We do, we do.
You know, normally you might have the pleasure of having multiple points when you're going to take it, but we're, we're crunched for time, so we will take it here, but take it to council, whether you will have time to take it more than, than one time remains to be seen. You might want to contemplate putting it on the twentieth and you could flag very specifically what information you'd like to know and then I can make sure I get something in your package. We'll, we'll.
Oh.
Can we think about?
So would you, would you guys like a, a clean version, um, of our draft here to, to do our distributing?
Please.
I guess, I guess the only thing then we probably need to, is that the section we added about the, um, the groundwater testing, the blasting and.
And then take off both things.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have a clean version. That's the only thing I guess I don't think I would clear about is, is, you know, that four hundred feet, want to change that.
Oh, I think that's a, a blind statement. I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I know we tabled that for tonight, that, that's the only thing that's going to be on us back, so.
I don't see us getting any answer among.
Uh, I think, I think you could post it for public input and that's something that still consider and discuss because you might make some changes as a result of public input.
Yeah, I mean, of course, there's going to be changes anyway, so it's not.
So as long as we know what the pieces are that we're still.
Why did you go in so low and knowing?
I think four hundred is very low, so.
I, I think.
If we make a formal change tonight, then that might give us a little bit more realistic.
What do you suggest?
I know, when we, when we, I mean, we've got a thousand feet for the same.
Okay. Thousand feet, sound right. I just don't want it to go to the, the public or maybe someone goes, oh, four hundred.
Why don't, why don't we start with a thousand?
I think.
Yeah, and then they can always change again.
Either way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's going to end up on there maybe.
So I'll go clean.
But, yeah, that was, that was.
Send that, maybe just to you, Don, and then we can use that as the basis for, yeah. I don't, I'm not quite sure what your process is from one import to capsule and vice versa.
I'm, I'm still working out the timing of everything, so, and noticing. Legal noticing is important, yeah, so, and I'm trying to figure out also when you could be let off the hook and the board takes the work they're doing with you and leaves that board, yeah, as well, so.
I mean, that, I mean, that, that's one thing, but if you need any, um, the significant edits that you can't do or you need me to show up to a meeting to.
You're not having to be a butt, yeah.
I'll be here, but I don't want to, um, overstay my offer.
Will, will there be another meeting on the public or we?
I'm suggesting the twentieth. You have a regular meeting.
Yeah.
You have two items and you could also have the public. I'm suggesting the twentieth. You have a regular meeting, you have two items, and you could also have the public hearing on the side if you feel ready.
Or anything else.
There's, there are two other items. There will be a micro brewery up by the Widge Duck restaurant. Um, and then.
We do.
And then seven new dwelling units up subway, and that, that building's right on Main Street.
Oh, they, they sound.
Not a lot of physical site improvements, but, you know, change of use, more intense use, et cetera.
They're gonna have to bring a sample, so.
Definitely.
Oh, yeah, are those two for, we're gonna align again?
Let's go to the joint.
Talk to the chair about that.
I'm with you. We'll go for the joint.
Go to the twenty, yeah, and we're just got a good question of which you would wait first, the twentieth.
Which can we just burn?
Yeah. Does you have the applicant's wait, or you have the public wait?
Have the public wait.
Yeah.
A wait.
Yeah, because.
Can I think about this? Are we done with this, or can I make just one?
Tonight, I believe.
Just one thing, I was, I think we should, if anybody wants to think about reconsidering the hours, I just think driving trucks around and crushing and doing that sort of thing after five o'clock and kids are playing outside in the summer, or people are having dinner, sitting on their porches. You do still hear, it may not be loud and annoying, but it is background noise that I think isn't necessary. That's all, okay.
I think, Jimmy, that maybe you're gonna hear in the summer, thirty hours in the winter, other hours. Because that's the way these guys that work outside do it. They work a bunch of hours in the summer and they cut back in the winter.
I don't know, I think. Well, we're outside more in the summer. I'm outside more, you know.
It was a tough idea to keep it.
I don't need their company.
It's, it's a thought.
Just a thought for.
Well, we'll have a brewery, you can go. By the time you get home, they'll be done.
Where the hell are we trying to go?
We're at Route Two with you.
In the Red Car place or?
There's a little building up behind. It used to be residential, and they wanna convert that building, so it's small.
Okay.
But it's a young kid who's looking to do it and he's pretty excited.
Yeah, and we need some business.
Well, because what's it called? Just closed too. I don't know if they're gonna reopen.
What other one?
Yeah, everybody likes that place.
I have a blank board question.
Yes, sir.
Just to review. Next meeting, I'm gonna do two applications first. Get into the ordinance with public input at that point. Do you have, do we have any kind of information from the public? You know, a list of items or issues or sections?
I'm gonna go back through and I will make sure you have props, so I'm gonna be hand delivering the packets to you Thursday before the meeting. And in that, I will include reference to all the public input, you know, summary, how many, and then attached.
The room will be private at night for input.
Correct. You may have duplicate, people who have already commented and come and speak as well, but it shouldn't be something as far as written, you know.
Joel's adding a, Joel's adding me a thousand feet. Then he's gonna create a new burger for us. How are we getting that? Did I add that package or John brought?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. All right, and then you had some things you were working on. There's input to that?
It was in regards to making things consistent, so the, there's, um, elements in the ordinance that you've been reviewing pertaining to.
How they, how they, are they dealt with?
And we have some design, um, parameters already in two ordinances that we have, so I wanna make sure they're all consistent, come up with references.
Joel gonna get that before he revises and gets that to us?
Yeah, actually, we'll have to get that to you before, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we have, we'll have a final word and we'll get, get that, that final planning bar draft, so to speak, I'll see, it can be edited. Again, that's, that's where you'll get to.
And I will call you and go over the stuff.
Relative to particles, uh, that debate, is there any additional input we need, like the EDP or uh, their, their requirements, measurements? Is there anything we need to follow up with Don's question?
I will provide you with the tools that you need, best that I can, so if, if there are things that you'd like me to provide specifically from the GP, I can hyperlink things within, you know.
I'm talking specifically about particular. Don's talk suggesting a baseline, and how do we get that, and two little. I'm sorry, Don.
I said, what I was trying to get to with all that, which. I'm gonna test something.
Yeah, yeah, right, and so, it sounded like we don't have enough information yet to nail that one down, so where do we get that?
Um, I think my understanding was that we would, we would see if we could find out how much the roughly what the cost is of a third party inspector to provide, to provide those tests, and then see if that's
Yeah, feasible.
Feasible, unreasonable to, um.
Who's doing that?
I, I've, I've read most things. It's usually the cost is passed on to the applicant at that, at that.
Who's gonna do that research?
I think maybe between me and Don, we can figure that out.
Okay, so you two are gonna take that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow and see if I catch you and maybe go to these points.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly, thank you.
Thank you. Who are you doing?
So we're meeting on the twentieth?
No.
Okay.
We have a couple things we have to go over.
Oh, shoot.
Right?
I almost ended the meeting, yes. Thank you, Joel.
When I do, when I do, it's a game. Can I get a bit?
I think you're.
Joel, yeah, you go for me.
Um, yeah.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
You need to.
The meeting all done?
Yeah. We're just gonna go over paperwork to see if we like it.
Right? This one's. Like adding and everything.
The PM three point five stuff, I think you've received all my, all my stuff.
I've got a nice pile.
All my stuff, and then, uh, again, this is the, the rock blasting in the community paper. I don't know how much of this made it to everybody, the stuff that I sent you.
I have a whole phone.
I haven't seen it yet.
I'm gonna check it, just make sure.
Okay, I'll make sure everybody gets it. And Ed, thank you very much for brushing up on the PM two point five and the fact that the EPA is gonna be reducing the value. Uh, really appreciate that. It's a homework there, so.
Yeah, it'll, well, again, so.
Yeah, yeah, but again, they're noticing there's a problem with, with heart attacks and strokes and everything else, and Maine having the highest incidence of lung cancer per capita in the nation. The air quality is something we really need to pay attention to. But thank you all. We'll see you on the twentieth.
You will.
Nice.
Okay, okay, here's some. But you still lose permanent application draft, if you would like, you have one for everybody?
Yeah, they were going, and I didn't expect you to digest that.
I thought that was a whole packet for me.
But I wanted to hand it out so you could take it with you. And this whole trying to get a complete application, making sure you have all the information you need to make decisions. I'm hoping that it can check the checklist and you see any, any glaring, uh, does that, do you have one back there? The, yes, okay.
Yeah. Did you just, I just get that from you or?
I was going around, isn't it?
No, that one was, that one is old.
No, I have, that's what it's from.
Yeah.
I added a log from my file, over that, maybe leave my file.
We all set now?
So the planning bylaws we're sitting at on the table when you got here, those are existing bylaws, so we just made a copy. Some of you may have them. Um, at some point, you may want to revisit these and see if they need to be updated.
Please.
Um, I gave you a copy of the winter permit fees, and so we need to have discussion. I'm not expecting anyone to have any response on this now, but I just wanted you to have the information structure, you want it?
One, one, so.
It should be out in front of you, but if not, here, I'm gonna give you one right now.
No, no, I mean, one, one, one of those, those.
It looks like old.
They're old, very old.
I don't, I don't know. I will have to.
This permit fee?
Oh, it says updated five three twelve, yeah.
Well, yeah, probably time to look there.
Can I ask a question about this? I believe that the previous meeting was brought up that this permit fees aren't under artist's agreement.
Oh, no, we could.
But I guess that the town council should be saying.
So we can make recommendations to them. You don't have any authority to adopt them, but I can do footwork and say, here's what the communities are doing. You can, you know, have suggestions about what you think is right for winter, and then we can take and make a formal recommendation to the council, but ultimately they do make the decision correct.
Better that we give it to them than they give it to us.
Do we have any, uh, idea what other, other?
Not yet.
What would be his?
Keep it cheap, yeah. So, keep it cheap.
Why?
Why have you got to charge somebody if they wanna do work on their own stuff? It already requires so much.
The town has to make money.
The town gets my money every year. It sure does.
One word.
And when they reevaluate properties in what, twenty twenty-seven, oh, they're gonna get double, so.
Yeah.
Once they reassess property values.
Yeah, but they're supposed to.
Screwed.
You know, rates.
Well, well, pollution's gonna go down. But they're making it go down, so, you know. If taxes go up, the pollution goes down.
So anyways, just so the planning board bylaws, make sure you have a copy and then take a look at it, redline it, mark it up, whatever you want to talk about at some point. I'll continue to talk to Betty and we can bring that up. Um, and then the permit fees, I don't have further information for you yet, but this is kind of a placeholder of, you know, in looking at this ordinance today, we have to come up something at a minimum to suggest for the ordinance that the council would adopt. So I have to do get some information together on what other communities are doing on that at a minimum. And then if you wanna talk about proposing something to the council to upgrade the other fees, we could do that as well. Um, so that's just, you know, stuck to two on between now and future meetings. And then the other thing, I just wanted to let you know that, um, I've created a schedule for the next calendar year and two of the dates for your normal meeting dates, but two of them, one of them falls on December twenty-fifth, and I'm thinking maybe no one will wanna come to that meeting.
No, I don't even plan to.
And then, yeah, another one is November twenty-seventh is the evening before Thanksgiving. Um, so do you wanna have one meeting each of those months, or do you wanna reschedule a meeting? I, I was told that in past years, often you only had one meeting each of those months, but I.
I think it would depend on what we've got going.
Okay. So I'm gonna strike those.
A stack of things that we have to do, we have to do it, but hopefully we won't have to. And lots of times, that's the time of year when people don't build and definitely you are slow.
I, I guess, I would suggest let's delete those second meetings, those two months. If, as we're approaching that, we see a real need, then we can add.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do what we did this time. We can consider adding.
We can.
Consider adding.
Of the brewery.
We could discuss that.
I wonder if we didn't have any cases and make it a meeting?
Oh, yeah.
That's never gonna happen.
Well, because now you're gonna have implementation of the comprehensive plan to fill those cracks. Good fun. So I'm proposing, I'm gonna, um, publish a three-week deadline for new applications prior to the, so if you wanna be at X agenda, you need to submit full up with materials three weeks prior um, and two weeks prior to the meeting date if it's a table item. And that's gonna give me an opportunity to review for completeness, um, and to circulate the information, so I, my intention is to, the, the Cobbe See Watershed District, they already review applications. Um, they're on this list, but the co-inforcement officer, the fire chief, the police chief, the ambulance service chief, conservation commission, and the assessor. What I'd like to do is send them the draft agenda um, with the hyperlinks to materials that you guys get from Deb, and they can look at it, and if they have comments, they can submit it to me, and then I put them in the official record and they go in your packets, um, and if they want hard copies at, at that time, they can request them of me too, and I'll get those to them. So I just wanted to mention that because I didn't know if there was, if you had any concern with any of those, or off the top of your head, like, oh, make sure you get it to another entity that I haven't thought of. But I'll, I will print this for you for the next meeting. I'm working, I was working on the, um, the deadlines, and I will take those two meetings off, uh, the agenda, as I'm amending that for you. And so what I'm trying to do is here's the meeting date, here's when the packets go, and I'm backing into that.
Yeah, yeah.
To make sure you're gonna have complete, and that we have time to get the review from other, other groups as well. So really.
Excuse me, is it Cobbe See Watershed on?
They are, yeah, Cobbe See Watershed, co-inforcement officer, fire chief, police chief, ambulance service chief, conservation commission, and I'm meeting with them next week. Um, I haven't met them yet, the conservation commission, and then.
I have a question on that. Are they active now?
They are. I'm not sure what's on their agenda, but they, they do meet, and I reached out and asked if I could attend the meeting and wanna talk to them about the development review process and see what kind of input they may, you know, they have to offer.
They're working on a multi-town. Um, do you remember what that's called? They wanna get a lo, like large acreage together over mo, multiple towns.
Oh, yeah.
They're working on that whole project.
Preservation?
Yes.
And trails too, right, where they work on the trails?
I think they wanna do it that way too, but, yeah, and looking into grants for it and everything.
All right, well, I'll learn about that next week.
Yeah.
So this, that's just a smattering of information, and I know you're tired, so I don't need anything from you right now. I just wanted to kind of put some stuff out there. And I'll formally bring some stuff up, maybe the next meeting, but maybe not because you're gonna have a pretty good agenda.
I don't wanna make a motion. Quick question for you, can I just ask? Joe Schmo just wants to put a porch on his deck.
Why would you all of that? No, that's, that would be just a building permit. This is if it's required with the planning board.
Right, so if, okay, so let's say he has put an addition on his house. All of this he'd be required to get?
Whatever's, whatever's relevant to the application.
Okay.
There, there may be some things that aren't pertinent, like, um, I don't know.
A lot of stuff. I can see, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that answers exactly what I was asking.
It's easier to be more inclusive, and then if things aren't, uh, relevant, not applicable, then to not have it on there and have to ask for it afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, I make a move with you. Second.
Thank you all.
All favor.
All, oh, yeah.
Jim? I think, okay, so, oh, oh, shoot, Jim? I didn't put him out, right? Hopefully there.
You didn't, I think.
I think you left him.
I think you already.
He's not. Oh, he's in the waiting room. Oh, he must have hung up. Oh, no, he's in the waiting room.
Oh, yeah?
Tell him.
Yeah.
Please tell him to night. How do we do that?
Huh?
Can we talk to him?
Yeah, he can hear us now.
Jim? Jimmy, you there?
He couldn't even ask him to change his phone number to his name.
I know.
It's just so weird.
It's time to get a little bit more. Is that Jim or is that somebody else?
Jimmy, you in the waiting room there?